All right, welcome, everybody. Uh, welcome to the July thirtieth. Uh, joint work session echo, uh, joint work session, the four P M. Joint work session, those online, uh, welcome for, uh, that are on joining us online. Uh, we have all council members present with the exception of council member Blair and council member Traburka. Joining us online is council member Traburka. Would you like to say hello?
Hello, thanks for having me.
All right. Um, we'll do it, and I think Bart's coming. He should be, or I mean, council member Blair should be here shortly. Um, but while we, while we, uh, do that, let's go ahead and do a review of our agenda this evening. Um, we have under acknowledgements, um, the proposed sewer improvement district tax increase. And, um, that's a state requirement that that be notified or presented in council meeting. And I think council member higher, you were gonna maybe make a few comments on that.
Yeah, I'll just make a clarification and be available for any questions that
That might be
that I'm able to answer.
Okay. Perfect. Then we have approval of minutes, uh, those that, uh, were assigned minutes. Hopefully you've had a chance to review those. Um, and then a recognition for the Ogden City Fire Department's one hundred and fiftieth anniversary. So joint proclamation and council member hire, we've asked to read that. Under consent items, we have the sustain sustainability committee appointments and then reports from an administration. Um, the proposed parking and mobility enterprise fund. This was before us in work session last week or two weeks, not last week, two weeks ago. And, um, or maybe it was last week. Was it? No, it was two weeks ago. We didn't do it. Okay. Um, after that, we have public comments. Um, we do have consideration to go into a closed session. Um, I don't know if there's feeling on that, uh, related to anything, if that's something we want to go ahead with or or not. I kind of, I think we had it on there just in case, but I don't know if there's a specific reason at this point, or if anyone has anything they'd like to, to do. For that. Okay, so we'll, we'll, uh, we'll mention or we'll bring it up again as we go through the agenda, but probably not. At this point, it looks like we probably are not going into closed session. Okay. With that, um, with our work session today, we have postponed the first item. Uh, for the amendments to the diversity commission ordinance. And, uh, we'll get that back on the calendar as soon as we can work, get that back on. Uh, but so then we'll invite Barton Riley up. Oh, yes.
This is, oh, I'm sorry. Is that change a result? I think it is. It's just a change as a result that we're making because of the legislation that was passed this past.
That's correct.
Okay, so, um, can we take just a minute and discuss that? The, the purpose for changing that and our changing this is just to comply with the state and the mandate that they've given. And, and so my feeling is just listening to a couple constituents, they're very, very concerned that we're changing the nomenclature. Does the, does, and so I guess the purpose of the committee also changes. But my concern is that diversity is a, a great issue. I think it's, I think it's something that we need to continue to address. And maybe that's not allowed or is allowed. I'm not sure what the, how the state law affects.
Yeah.
Yeah, the city and as a city council. So that's why I bring it up. Is that something we'll address as we talk about this particular issue next week?
Yeah, and I think, Janine, you probably best to probably would summer or explain exactly what we're looking at doing there.
Yeah, so all of the recommendations came as a result from the city attorney's office as a result of that legislation. Um, and I think your concerns and the concerns of your constituents are shared by the mayor's office. And that's one of the reasons why they recommended, recommended re-affirming the, um, goal, the values that are in the, the original charter, diversity charter. Uh, it just, for whatever reason, those particular words can't be used by, uh, governmental entities, but that doesn't mean that, um, anything is really changing. Uh, I think that the diversity commission, uh, committee, diversity commission, uh, purposes aren't changing, just their name. And so, um, that's, that's really what we're trying to do is just comply.
Okay. And I guess the concern that I'm hearing.
Yeah, um.
Yeah, go ahead.
Go ahead, Sean, and then, or, yeah, and then council member Traburka.
So the, the concern that I'm hearing is that this affects probably the marginalized people in our community more than anybody else. And underserved people in our community. So to me, this is kind of a, a big issue. And I just I, and I don't know where I stand as a council person, because I still think those people need to be represented. And so hopefully there's a way forward to do that through, through this process. So I just voiced my concern because I want to be prepared and ready and knowledgeable.
Well, I appreciate, I appreciate that for sure.
Yeah, so the, one of the requirements of the state law was to remove, um, references to personal, I characteristics. And so we've done that, but that doesn't mean that those things can't, you know, that representatives from those types of communities can't still be included in the discussions. And I don't, Angela, I don't know if you, what your comments were, but you might want to go ahead with that.
Yeah, church or council members.
I just got a promotion. No, I'm kidding. Um, no, and I, I really appreciate council member Myers bringing up this issue because I think, um, you know, you all know that I have a deep interest in this area since this is kind of my day job as well. Um, so I appreciate you bringing up those concerns and, uh, of course I share the same concerns. And I, I appreciate, really appreciate that we're actually gonna be doing this next week so I can be in there in person. So the work trips, I couldn't be there today. So that's why I'm calling in from the airport. We can't be on very long, but, um, uh, yeah, I'm looking forward to the conversation with you all. And then I just wanted to follow up because I had sent an email and I apologize that, um, prior, I have wasn't able to follow up on this. Just about some other issues within the ordinance, um, just around some different, um, caveats, I guess, in the revised ordinance that have to do with sort of term limits and, um, removal from the commissioner. What won't, what is now the commission, but will later be called something else, um, and a couple of other things. I just didn't know if there had been an opportunity to, um, look at those issues and just make sure that. I think for me, um, when we have policy change like this, um, one way that I look at things so that they're fair is I say, um, you know, if we're gonna have a six month term, a, a limit beyond terms for the people that serve on this board, then that should be the case across all boards. And so, you know, so that's another issue, um, that I would bring up alongside of the concerns, uh, council member Myers brought is if we're making changes in this advisory committee, I guess I would call it, um, then it should be applied across the board to all of them in the same way.
Yeah, so I apologize, um, council member Traburka, I don't remember your email, but with regard to, to that comment, uh, they, the administration is in the process of revamping all of the committee ordinances. And that will be included in all of the committee ordinances, that, that limitation, that six month limitation.
Perfect, yeah. Well, I'll make sure that you, um, get that too, because maybe I thought that I sent it or something, and that can definitely happen.
Not a problem. Thank you. Yeah, I, I, I kind of reflect a little bit on, um, President Mortensen at Weaver State and, and, uh, he was talking about, I think, one of the early Weaver State College charters and about how, I mean, not using necessarily the words diversity, because this is what we've been doing all along and will continue to do that. If we have to change names and change titles and whatever, we're gonna try and still fulfill that mission. So I, I'm hopeful that with these changes, we can still address those, those areas and, and have those communities represented and and we can still, you know, do all that, so. But thanks for bringing that up. So, yeah, it looks like, yeah, we'll get that, we'll get that coming up. So, okay. All right, with that, oh, go ahead.
And I just want to, um, also do a big shout out to Linda and all she's doing with the, um, that, not the naturalization, sorry, yeah, the naturalization. Um, I think you guys saw that email, but that was just, that's fantastic that we're doing that. That was just above and beyond, and it was just really nice to see that we're helping so many people, so.
Yeah, and they are gonna be scheduling another, um, I guess, swearing in ceremony, and it will be here in the chambers, uh, towards the end of August. And, you know, you'll be invited. She just, um, it, she won't have a lot of leeway. She may have maybe ten days notice about when that's gonna happen, because somebody from the federal government will be here to, to, to do that, do that, uh, ceremony. So we'll let you know as soon as we know when that is, so that you could participate if you're available.
Perfect. Okay, thank you. All right, with that, Barton, uh, you're up first, uh, the proposed Ogden Bend mixed use zoning amendment, text amendment. Um, yeah, welcome.
Thank you. So this was a change to the Ogden Bend master plan. The master plan was adopted, uh, about twenty thirteen or so. So it's been a while and there's been some development that's happened and some that hasn't. And so, uh, we've proposed a amendment to the plan to look forward to the future and try to make sure that it can be developed following the original vision, but tweaking some of the details so they can move forward. Okay, so the Ogden Bend area, it is along the river, basically between Washington and Wall and Eighteenth and Twentieth Street. The area is zoned mixed use, and with mixed use comes, uh, specific set of standards and a project master plan. So this is the current concept master plan. It was, uh, adopted by the redevelopment agency for the area. And if you look at that and compare it to what's happened now, some of it's developed pretty much according to plan, or some of it's still waiting to be developed and some of it's never gonna develop according to that plan. One of the challenges is the diversity of ownership in the area. Um, I'm highlighting the owners of the larger vacant pieces of property. It's really a checkerboard pattern. Some of it is owned by Ogden City or the redevelopment agency. Some is owned by Lotus, uh, and some by some other property owners. But, uh, there isn't a good block of property to really facilitate development of any particular piece of property. And there are some properties like, uh, the storage property that will probably stay there for a long time, just economically. This, uh, shows the procedures that we go through on a mixed use zone. The, uh, there's a zoning ordinance text which sets out the rules for how land can be developed, the things like setbacks and heights and building styles. Um, that is adopted by the city council. The zoning map itself is adopted by the city council. Then there's this project master plan that's approved by the redevelopment agency. And then individual properties go through a development agreement and site plan review. So this particular project deals with two of those pieces. One is the mixed use zoning ordinance text, and second is the project master plan. So I know this part is dealing with the zoning text as city council. Second part would be the project master plan, which dealing with redevelopment agency. I'm gonna talk about both of them together. Uh, because it doesn't make whole lot of sense if I talked to about them in isolation. One of the things that, uh, we're looking, I showed you that checkerboard pattern of property, and we're trying to facilitate some ways where there can be some property swaps or exchanges or sale, purchases and sales to to consolidate bigger blocks of property. Uh, one of the things that's being contemplated is a, uh, a land swap with, uh, Lotus who owns the property that's just east of Lincoln Avenue. City owns property, uh, on Eighteenth and Wall. And there's contemplation of doing some sort of exchange of those properties.
It would, yeah, it's okay.
That upper left hand corner that says Ogden City, the blue, that's doing the swap, is that on the north side?
Yes.
Of Wall, just where the Bell.
It's on the east side, north side of the river.
North side of the river.
East of Wall, yeah.
So the Bell Industrial Supply Place, the city owns that now? Is that where that's?
No.
Oh.
Uh, yeah, I'm not sure where the Bell is, sorry.
Bell Janitorial Supply. They're not.
Oh, okay. Yeah, they're down here. Oh. They're down here.
Okay.
So, yeah, there's, uh, you go north there, there's the storage units. Then you cross the river going north, and then it'd be the city property. And there's Eighteenth Street and there's, uh, the Chrome. Yeah.
So why would Lotus be interested in doing a swap? Because we're not allowing any apartments along Wall Avenue, correct? And Lotus, isn't that what they do? Development of?
Uh, well, that's why we're doing the, the plan amendment here, so that, uh, that would allow apartments in that area. So, yeah, the current master, let me, the current master plan has that particular piece of property planned for a park. And the Lotus property would be down here. So the idea, yeah, so they wouldn't want to just exchange land and, and only to be able to develop a park. So part of the plan would be to plan to move the park to be more central to the area. And then, uh, change this mixed use area to allow multifamily. So swapping it from this being a, uh, more apartment area to move that over to here and then move the park down to there. And I know, you know, the planning commission looked at this and staff has looked at this. And while we think this is, was a good area for a park, we think this is a better area for a park, uh, as it gets it off of Wall Avenue. It's a little more central neighborhood park. It's a little more destination, someplace where you'd feel more comfortable. You know, letting your kids run around the, the park and, you know, not worry about, you know, kids or walls running out into Wall Avenue. Uh, it's a little more rectangular area. Uh, it's more conducive to bigger activity areas. So I know the planning commission was, I'm looking at that favorable to doing that relocation of the park. One of the other changes that's being proposed of the plan is the previous plan was pretty specific about some of the buildings, had these layouts and had specific buildings that said, okay, that building has to be a multifamily, and this one has to be a townhome, and this has to be single family. Uh, laid out these squares. Uh, but because of the checkerboard pattern, it was never gonna develop exactly like the plan. And so one of the changes was to make it really more conceptual, conceptual plan. So even though the, does show a idea of how it could be developed, it's not saying that this building has to look just like this, or this building has to look like this. It does have these general areas where these different kind of shadings tell what kinds of buildings need to be in that general area, but it's not saying, you know, a particular layout of development of those particular properties. That's to accommodate some more flexibility within the area. One thing, uh, that was a lot of interest is to get some sort of, uh, more single family ownership in this area. Uh, we've done, there's some really attractive development. Um, there's some of the best townhome designs in there. Um, you, you have some multifamily. Uh, there's some really attractive projects that have been developed in there, but, uh, the idea was to do a mix, including some single family, and that just hasn't occurred yet. So the plan would be to include a single family area within the middle of the project.
And by single family, are you talking about the sale product?
Yeah, for sale product, yeah. Uh, attached townhomes, yeah. Um, and then there's some other adjustments. The plan had some things that didn't quite work, like this little uh, court there that maybe look good on paper, but, uh, makes all our traffic engineers wince every time we look at it. Um, a little bit of relocation of the realignments of the street. Uh, there's a plan for a new bridge across the river through that area.
Can I back you up a little bit more?
Yeah.
On the, the, the single family home part of that, is, is it, so what will it be zoned? What, what will the zone be?
It'll be mixed use.
So, so how will you, uh, specify that it's gonna be a for sale product and, uh, with a, like a townhome? How would you, how would you specify that?
Yeah, so the plan, the project master plan will designate that, that particular area, that's what those colors has to be. It's, it's for a single family.
Okay.
And then the zoning text will designate that it has to be platted for individual ownership.
So it's kind of a, a develop agreement, sort of an arrangement there? Is that, because I, I, I just trying to understand, I know the mixed use has never really worked like it was intended. And, and I think that's what you're trying to fix here. Is, is that right or no, or?
Uh, we're just trying to make sure that we get that mix of products within this area and by saying that, okay, that area is gonna be the single family area.
Okay, s- all right. So, so you're gonna do it not just by the nature of the zone, but it's gonna be kind of identified.
Um, yeah, I'll be designated in the project master plan.
Okay.
That it has to be there.
Master plan, okay, great. Thank you.
So will the park be, uh, open space or will it be some other, I mean, it, will it? The land use, will it be open space, oh, one?
Uh, it'll be, the zoning will be mixed use. The whole area will, will continue to be mixed use. And the, the development will have to follow the adopted project master plan, which in that area would say that's gotta be part. Yeah, say this has to be part, this has to be single family. This can be and some of the stripes say it can either be a townhome or apartment or. Yeah, so it goes back, if I go way back, it goes back to this where those, kind of the where things go is governed by the project master plan. Couple of questions in, uh, the council staff report had, uh, the project had a, the original plan had this phasing plan. Uh, developed ten years ago or so, and, yeah. And it's never followed that, and it's never going to follow it. And so we did take out that project phasing plan. We did add this, uh, pedestrian circulation plan, which I think is a, a very important feature of this area. Uh, really want to make it very walkable. Um, and I'm, I'm still blown away every time I walk down the River Parkway. It's like you can get clear across the community and, you know, never have to cross a major street. That's amazing. So, so the interior circulation would, uh, continue in this area.
Can I ask another question?
Yep.
Um, the, the part of that, that fronts onto Wall.
Mm-hmm.
That used to be phase three, um, that you say will never develop, and I, I agree with you. I don't think it ever will.
Yeah.
I remember when it was first proposed and first done, there were a lot of those businesses along there. Uh, just north of Standard Plumbing, the Standard Plumbing building and the one just south. They were kind of worried that they would never be able to reuse their, sell their building to somebody else, because you know, any kind of change would, would it, would enact that. Um, the new u- uses that were prescribed by the mixed use. They were really concerned about that, and I, and I haven't heard a lot about that recently, and, but nothing has changed for them. They're still
Right.
all using it about the same. But will this new, um, plan allow them more flexibility and in, in as much as they are on Wall? I mean, it, it really seems like they, that's more of a commercial front and isn't really suitable for the mixed use and all of those kind of things. Is that, is that gonna change them at all?
Yeah, this is, uh, what I wanted to explain that to the public when they came to the hearings and things like that. So, um, in fact, I think I show their, their building on there. Um, if you, they wanna keep using it the same, the always have, they can. So this doesn't change that. If they want to change the use of an existing building, they would need planning commission approval. And as a change of non-conforming use, so it can be basically less less impactful, but not more intense.
So it is gonna continue to be a non-conforming use then?
Yes.
Okay, that, I guess that's, I should have asked that question that way.
Yes, it would continue to be a non-conforming use. Um, they can build something, they want to tear down, build something, they would need to follow the master plan or ask for a change to the.
Actually, okay.
So the zoning ordinance text, some of the things it does, one, something we had difficulty implementing the plan because it wasn't just entire blocks being developed all at once, suppose more half a block or part of a block. Um, the, it required that there be certain number, a variety of development. Certain number, a variety of development types within that block. But that meant the first person could do this kind and then the second person had to do a different kind and that was awkward. So. That's why we created these development areas and said, okay, on these projects. You, these are the types of developments you can do. And in these areas. They're the kind of the orange. That's a mixed residential. You have to do. Uh, like two different building types in there in your project, but it doesn't depend on what. Someone else does. Um, it does modify the maximum building lengths along. Wall Avenue. This is actually a description from our downtown zoning and downtown. We didn't want. Long continuous blocks of buildings, but we understood that in downtown you actually have. Entire block that's a building face, but because it's broken up in different. Buildings, it has a really different feel than just one long monolith. So the plan does continue that theme along Wall Avenue. It does continue to ha- require breakups along the side streets and along the river. Has some changes to the sign ordinance. The sign ordinance is a little unclear on how it applies to this mixed use. So uh, we're making it the same as the C one zone. I'm gonna grab water. So one of the other questions he had in the council staff report was just. What does the planning commission do when they looked at, do they make any changes? And they did. Um, one of the changes, they're really interested in encouraging more ownership in the area. And they talked about. A uh, a variety of options. What they settled on was. You know, the town hall or the single family areas. Those will have to be platted for um, individual ownership. And then these mixed residential areas. They'd require that at least twenty-five percent of the buildings or dwelling units be either. Platted for individual ownership or condominiumized. As a way to promote more ownership housing in the area. Another change that the planning commission had, they. Planning commission is very interested in the river and maintaining good access to the river. And uh, they felt that some of the development was a little too close to the river, so they. Established a setback. From the river, from the flood plain of five feet from the, or the floodway line. On each side of the river. Uh, also a requirement for a twelve foot wide maintenance path. That's something we've. Experienced, especially last year with the high floods and trying to. Get access to the river. Um, found that was very important. So the planning commission added those. Standards. The commission or the council staff reported also asked, talk about uh, some things that Lotus had asked for. Uh, and so they had uh, made some requests and the planning commission considered each of those, went through all. All and, and made some uh, recommendations on those. One. Of the lowest request was to allow surface parking in the multifamily area and. The answer is the plan would already allow surface parking, so you're not required to do structured parking. Uh, they had asked. The plan originally had a four-story maximum height on that eighteenth wall property. Um, Lotus had asked to go up to six and the planning commission changed that from. To five stories. They didn't feel comfortable going all the way to six stories on that. The plan requires a fourteen-foot floor height and the ground floor. That's to create a. More uh, storefront areas. It's more pedestrian friendly, has greater uh, interaction with the street. Lotus had asked that be changed to ten feet on that apartment area and the uh, planning commission did change that. Did recommend changing that from fourteen feet to ten feet. The setbacks along Wall Avenue and Eighteenth Street, the, the plan. The original plan shows ten-foot setbacks along Wall and Eighteenth Street. And Lotus had asked to be less than ten feet. The planning commission discussed that and uh, felt comfortable with the ten-foot setback requirement. And then also the allowance that the buildings. Allow buildings that appear to be separated. And the plan does allow the ones that appear to be separated along Wall Avenue and Washington and Twentieth Street. But on the other streets, it does require a. An actual separation. So, planning commission looked at this very carefully and got a lot of good feedback and they're recommending adoption of. The zoning ordinance text amendment to you and then to the redevelopment agency later, they'll recommend. Adoption of the project master.
So Barton on the wall and Eighteenth. Um, where they have to appear to be separate buildings, is that that two hundred foot expanse of building that's gonna be changed? With materials or, or architectural facade or. Juts in and out along that setback or how will that be accomplished?
Yes, it could be different heights. Yeah, it can be different materials. It can be. Uh, setbacks, something so that looks like it's two different buildings, even though they're.
Okay.
Show me where that's at.
That would be. Along. Eighteenth. And Washington. I mean, along Wall. Twentieth and Washington. The others there would require there to be an actual separation like this.
How would they keep their mid-block crossings or their pedestrian circulation plan if you're gonna have those? Large of the buildings. I guess maybe I'm. Trying to understand how that could happen.
Yeah, the, the plan, the actual development plan will have to accommodate. The walkways in one way or the other through those blocks. So. That pedestrian's circulation. The pedestrian circulation even could be. You know, under an archway through a building, things like that.
So hell, I maybe I don't understand, not reading the map. Okay, the uh, Eighteenth and Wall. Corner, tho- those buildings there. Where is the parking on that? On the, on, I guess this is just a mall.
Yeah, this is.
Of whatever, but it looks like it's not parking. It looks like it's.
Yeah, the, the uh, the consultant drew it, drew these um, with. An anticipation of podium parking, but it, the plan doesn't require podium parking. It could be. Surface parking. So you could do one building there and surface parking here. That meets the plan. Just their concept plan, they didn't try.
Sure, okay.
Yeah, I, I'd really like the planning commission's input on this. I think that's brilliant. Um, I, I, now after listening to your presentation as opposed to reading and following, I, I think it's uh. Well planned that you've extended the High Adventure Park across the river on the other side. That gives that. A very open feeling and it's a regular parkway user. It uh, I like that they've expanded out the sides of the parkway. It appears to me like you've added another trail on the north side of the river. That's not there currently. So.
Yes.
That's really nice. I like that as well. What concerns me, which you've addressed in your plan, is that as you go down the parkway, it started to feel a little crunched with some of the. Proximity of some of those housing. Uh, developments that have gone in there, those apartment dwellings. So I like the fact that you've expanded out the. The sides of that a little bit more than what they have been in the past and. So, great job. I just want to say thanks. That looks, that looks really nice.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions or comments or discussion?
Just what was the reasoning for reducing that height to from fourteen to ten? I mean, I think that, don't you want to have some sort of? Retail option in the front or? Access, whatever.
Yeah, I mean, the, the reason for it originally was to be in a mixed use area, having that taller storefront. Really creates a very pedestrian friendly. Facade and it does provide a lot of flexibility on what you use the inside for. Um, I think they, the planning commission looked at. Well, if this is just gonna be an apartment, then there's not as great a need for that extra floor height. And, yeah, and they were comfortable with it. And they looked at some other apartments, like uh, the uh, River Rock right across the street has that height and. I think just in their mind, they were, they were comfortable with that height.
It was that only on the wall or is that, I mean, can you stipulate on Eighteenth Street having it different or?
You could, yeah. Yeah, the, they just said for an apartment type building, it could be a ten-foot.
Barton, Ogden City will be developing the park. Is that correct?
That's our anticipation, yeah.
Okay. And then the other green space that comes down the middle between Lincoln and Wall, that's the developers.
Yes.
Property, yeah. And that's a planned development to have that kind of a walkway like that?
Yeah, this would be at, as developments come by, they would have to accommodate some sort of. Walkway there and this, that would probably be a, a private walkway.
But that requires access back up to the River Parkway. Is that, is that something in a stipulation as a part of the plan?
It would be in that pedestrian plan, so they would have to accommodate that. Yeah, so it doesn't have to look exactly like this, but these general connections would need to be made through the projects.
I'm sorry, I'm getting into the weeds a little bit now, but the, the uh, the bridges, footway bridges. Between those, is that something that Ogden City will be doing or is that a developer project?
Uh, I think that's still to be determined, whether that's a city project or whether it's a negotiated. Uh, thing to require the. With the developer to do that. It might end up. Some of the problems with this one is that's uh, it would land in the mini storages, so. It might be a while before that gets put in, but that's still to be negotiated.
Alrighty, so we have this coming to us on August twentieth. Um, so if we have any other questions or thoughts or comments that come up before then, let us know so we can get them to Barton to address in that meeting.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Council staff, are we having uh? Brandon, welcome. Up next to talk about the uh, the fiscal twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five budget.
We'll go ahead and get started with the, the budget message. Uh, for those who don't know online, for those listening, my name is. Uh, Brandon Garside. I am the uh, communications manager for the Ogden City Council and. Sorry, I'll get set up here. Maybe. There we go. Um, and it, it's, it's our goal. Uh, Eric Davenport and myself, it's our goal um, as the communicators in the office to um, make. Information about the council transparent and accessible and the budget message is. Us trying to do that with uh, the budget, which is a very complicated. Uh, topic to discuss and, and, and comprehend. And so we try to boil it down into an, and easy to, oh, I see, it's not showing up there. I'm so sorry. A document that's easy to, to understand and just get a grasp of the, there we go. Sorry about that. Um, are we sharing on Zoom, Eric? We are, okay, good. All right, sorry about that. Thank you. Uh, thanks Angela, appreciate it. So, uh, because. The final budget is not yet adopted, some of the information in this draft is. Will be changed. So we'll, we'll keep that in mind as, as we go. And so starts off with a message from the uh, city council chair and um, council members, you should, you should have. Received an email from me um, with, with a quote that we're going to include in the budget message that you can. Provide feedback on. Um, and, and I've gotten feedback from some of you, but not all, but so if you want to give back to me as soon as you can, that'd be great. Obviously, a lot of the content in here with the, the message from the chair will change based on the decision that uh, it, it is made. And um, but the, the message from the chair acts as kind of a general overview of this is how the process went from proposed. From proposed, uh, proposed budget to final adopted and what is accomplished in it. Um, the budget snapshot, obviously, these, these figures will change depending on, on what is done. This is more about. The purpose, I mean, the purpose of showing you this is to show how the data will be presented and how the information will be presented, not necessarily for the. Accuracy of the data that I'm uh, providing. So I'd keep that in mind, but um, again, just trying to make it. Easy to understand where uh, the revenue comes from in the city and where uh, it goes to in the city as well. Same thing with the, the total city budget. And uh, that also has a brief description about enterprise funds and how they are. Uh, designed to work, paying for themselves with the fees that they use uh, from, from customers. Then it goes into the five-year strategic plan, breaking down the uh, four strategic directives, which are economic development, community safety. Recreation and city image and reputation. That's taken straight out of. Uh, the strategic plan and uh, with this being the final year of the strategic plan, this is gonna change when the, when um. Moving, moving forward. So this is the last time that the five-year strategic plan will be used here. This, uh, this information is correct. This is um. Property tax disbursement for um, Ogden City residents. And this is designed to help that, help residents understand. How much of their total property taxes actually go to Ogden City. So in twenty twenty-three. Ogden City accounted for seventeen point eight four percent of the total tax bill for residents. So. Kind of breaks that down and um, so any property tax proposals or changes that you make, it's. To that seventeen point eight four or whatever it is that's close to that for this, this year. Um, again, budget highlights kind of goes over. Some main points um, here. Um, big thing was staffing and the, the amount of employees and being able to. Uh, keep up with the market based on the McGrath study and the different things that needed to happen to facilitate that. Previously, the CIP, the Capital Improvement Plan was considered separately from the council and we've decided to combine those. Seemed to make sense. And so we were also including that in the budget message and it, we go through the list of different, of, of the significant projects. Obviously, we can't list them all here, so we. Uh, take the, the heavy hitters and, and put them up uh, on this list as well. Um, economic development, just uh, so then we, we break down each of the strategic directives and how the budget. Addresses each directive with economic, economic development. We talk about the Quality Neighborhood Program. Um, as well as the projects funded through the five-year consolidated plan and the annual action plan. Uh, we mentioned the Business Information Center, uh, commercial flights coming in and out of uh, the airport now. Curb gutter and sidewalk as well as O, OGX, different things that help. Economic development that are being uh, addressed in the, in the budget with community safety. Police and fire, obviously, more positions in these departments and step increases as well for. Firstborn officers. And um, it also mentions pedestrian vehicle safety with uh, improved. And, um, it also mentions pedestrian vehicle safety with, uh, improved lighting, different CIP projects. And as the, uh, also is the, uh, the water incre, the, the proposed, uh, water rate increase to help fund the thirty-six inch. Uh, Canyon Waterline Project. All those things help improve community safety and recreation. Obviously, the. The big thing here is the Marshall White Center, which will be finished this fiscal year, which is very exciting. It kind of talks about how that came to be and then it just mentions other. Improvements that are made throughout the city to improve. Open spaces and, um. Yeah, those kind of resources that the city has. And then for city image and reputation. Mentions the, the CIP as well as improvements at the Union, at the Union Station, including the Mercy Boxcar Arts Grants, um, increases. In the marketing division to help bolster engagement and keeping, uh, residents informed, which. Is never a bad thing. Um, we're a big fan of that, so. And then lastly, while it, it's not one of the four. Strategic directives in the five-year strategic plan, uh, fiscal sustainability and transparency is something that the council focuses on. And in this section, we talk about the merit increases for employees, uh, the strategic plan. And as well as the audit committee that kind of helps keep everything in line. And then at, uh, once. You all adopt the budget goals and guidelines, we will. Tag those onto the back of the budget message as well. So if people want to go through that, they can. And then the intent, obviously, once we get everything finalized and signed off by you all and, uh, council staff and administrative staff too, I, I failed to mention. Uh, Justin's been huge with helping me out, making sure that I have the figures at least close, you know, once we get, uh, everything. Kind of finalized, we'll do one last look at everything to make sure we have, um, all of our ducks in a row. And then we'll make this widely available to the public for. Their consumption and hopefully, uh, just a better understanding of. Of what is in the budget and, um. How their tax dollars are, are being used. So with that, I'm happy to take any questions and I hopefully didn't take up too much time, so. Easy peasy. Great, thank you.
Any questions? Okay.
Oh, but I sure look a lot older.
That picture, huh? Might be a few pictures that need to be updated. I'm not going to say, I'm not going to name names.
It's probably pulling up for you, huh? Yeah. Thank you.
Art's the only one that looked younger than his pictures.
Yeah.
Yes.
I do have a question, Brandon, and, and that is just how, how is this communicated? To the public? That might be there. I just haven't captured that in my mind. I don't recall. Is that something you could share?
Sure, I can just come up here.
Yeah, so it, it's something that we'll link to, um, in our social media channels. Whenever the, the budget is adopted, we will send a press release and we'll also have a link to the PDF format of. The finalized budget message. That may not be available immediately after the budget is adopted, depending on how things go. Um, but we'll try to get as, as, you know, we'll try to get available as, as soon as we can, once everything's, um, finalized, so. Um, we'll also, um, to, you know, take advantage of the At Your Service Newsletter. And have a link to the PDF as well, so people, so, uh, residents can review it that way. So between. Yeah, the newsletter and, uh, social media push, that's how, uh, people can, can access it.
And it, it's actually part of the budget document itself as well. It's included there, so. Okay, um, I'm just going to talk briefly about some change to the goals and guidelines. Um, I will say preliminarily, um. These two documents, uh, I wondered whether we need them. Uh, they are. Duplicative of the financial principles in a lot of, in a lot of, uh, ways. Uh, and I think they were initially developed, uh, because they serve different purposes. But I think we'll evaluate these for, for next year, uh, to determine what we want to do with them, but for now. Uh, we will just make some changes and these will also be included, uh, with the budget document. And these are the, the primary changes, um, that we're recommending. Hopefully you had a chance to, to review the red line. But. One of the things that, um, we've been talking with in leadership and I mentioned in notes. Is how we're going to be changing, uh, the use of the five-year strategic plan or. What the five-year strategic plan will look like in the future. Um, so. We were requiring, uh, specifically that, uh, the administration complete the comprehensive financial sustainability model. And that will become a really important document for guiding future budget discussions. Um, and then as, as that strategic plan, uh, based on some research that. Uh, Vice Chair White has done. We, we think that we'll take that sustainability model and combine it with some, the updates to the general plan. And other key policy documents, uh, which will then become a more comprehensive, uh, five-year strategic plan, maybe with the CIP. So, um, so that's what this language basically says is this is the guidelines that will happen and. For, for the future. Uh, also for salaries and benefits, we added lang, language. Stating that any unexpended salary and benefit funds will be returned to fund balance at the end of the year. That actually is, uh. A significant policy change, uh, that has happened this year and I think it's been a really. Good thing, uh, and really fits with that sustainability. And transparency that the, the council's been working for. Also, I changed, um, and this is up for discussion, but, uh, just changing when you evaluate the certified tax rate from. A bi-annual review to an annual review. Uh, I just think that that makes sense to do that every year. Because of the significant. Pressures we're feeling, you know, from interest rates and, and that. The goals, I've just kind of summarized the goals that are included. So for economic development, quality neighborhoods, a pay parking system and the housing in appropriate areas. Uh, community safety, competitive salaries, a new training facility, a recreation, so updating programs and facilities, which would include. Marshall White and maximize playable field space. Uh, city image and reputation, um. Again, the new Marshall White, uh, building and then, uh. Planning for the Twenty-Fourth Street interchange, which I think will be a really big. Impact for the city, you know, that's going to be a significant change and really has the ability to change how. Uh, we're perceived as. People come into the city. And then fiscal sustainability, it just included employees as assets. And that will focus on essential services and the updated fee structure. Um, and Brandon, that's one recommendation you might want to include in your budget message is the change. Just fee structures being updated so that we're keeping up with that. Those, again, inflationary pressures. So that is really the significant changes in those two documents. So I don't know if you have any. Comments on those. Okay, thank you.
I just have a comment, um, and. And I thought the. The comprehensive financial sustainability model, um, almost as bad, as a bad as name as the. Whatever we call the Sustainability Committee. But regardless of that, I just, I, I want to applaud, um. You, you guys for doing that and working through that and, and adding to it and because I think that that, you know, in the future. This modeling, um, is something that's going to help us understand what's coming down. Into the future, where we're going to be able to have money, where we're going to be able to, to look at, uh, helping fund and really, you know. We talk about employees as assets, but how do we now pay them and, and we can do that now and, and understand where that's going to happen into the future. And so. I just applaud administration for, uh. You know, really digging in and, and anything I know that the council is willing and ready to help in any way we can too. So thank you and. CFSM, go. I'm going to get that hashtagged on my T-shirt.
Yeah, and, and I think, and Lisa, I don't know if that term is a term of art and from the accounting world. Or I think it might just have come from LRB, the city's financial advisors. Or did you do, or did you think it up, Lisa? Yeah, that's what I figured, that, that, that came from the financial advisors, so.
Well, thank you. Anything else on this, since Ken is out for a second? All right, I will. Oh, let's see. I think Glenn's up next with general budget discussion. It's time for, to get lunch or dinner if you want, so.
Go grab something to eat. We have like, uh, almost an hour. So. No, I don't, uh, have any, uh, prepared slides or anything, but I did send some information out to you all, uh, earlier today. Um, just goes over, uh, some of the scenarios that, uh, it seems like you all have landed on, at least going into next week. Um, so that's how the budget will be presented next week, but there is the other, the option, the, um. So as it will be presented next week, that's the full, uh, maintaining the rate, the full five point two, three six percent, uh, increase. Um, like I said, I, I sent out some information with, uh, a three percent CPI. That was something that was talked about by the council as well. So this is a, an opportunity to, uh, have you all discuss any changes you want to make before we go into the, into the meeting next week. So we have a little bit of time, a day or so, to, uh, make some changes. If you want to, uh, change some things, otherwise, uh, it's full steam ahead until, uh, into next week, so.
Bueller, Bueller. Any comments, questions? Um, obviously Glenn has been a great resource and can help us with all sorts of scenarios. His spreadsheets are awesome and, um. I think what. For the new council members that are just going through this, one of the things is that, um. Again, trying not to make things on the fly, but we certainly, and Glenn has prepared. Far enough in advance that if we need to make some things and changes on the fly, that, that, that will be, um. Somewhat okay, so. Is that what I heard you say?
Yep.
Okay. And, and language and all sorts of different things. Go ahead.
Yeah, and thanks for the talking points.
Yeah.
That, uh, depending upon where we end up, that's going to. Really allow us to pull some out of our pocket and. Be sure of the messaging that we're giving without taking it on the fly on our own.
Yeah.
Can, those of you that have gone through this many times before, what's this look like next week? I mean, when we sit down in the chamber, what does this process. Proceed like?
Do you want to go from the oldest to newest or?
As far as procedural? I mean, we've got options in here. How, how do we explore the various options and how will a motion come about and?
Yeah, I mean, well. In the past, well, in the past. We would just. We're going to, it'll be a, a, but, uh, an item on, on the agenda. We'll go through that and then. Open it up for discussion. Kind of public comment first and then after you take that public comment, kind of see where the. What we feel comfortable with or what the temperature is and then. Have discussion on that.
And we have talked about, we will have some motion language. I think we discussed, uh, in case you do want to make some changes. Right now, we, in, not necessarily with the budget, but in other situations. We have had actual options on the agenda that you could choose from. Next week will not have options. It will just be just as Glenn presented. You know, the, it's as presented, the five, the five point three six. You know, tax increase and salary schedules as proposed. And, uh, arts grants as proposed. One thing that will be new this year, uh, that we've never done before is. We are now required by the state to have a separate public hearing on, um. Municipal officers' salary increases. So that doesn't, it's, doesn't include elected officials. It's just. Sort of the high-ranking, uh. Officials that work for the city, so. Department heads, um, directors, statutory positions. Uh, so there will be a separate public hearing, but no, and you can take public comment, but there's no action. The action will actually occur as part of. The overall budget, uh, adoption. So, but we will have some motion language in case. There is a change on, if you want to do something different with the tax rate. And if you're anticipating other changes, that'd be great for us to know, because then we could also be prepared for that.
Your vice chair? Um, yeah, I was just going to say I've got to drop off an admit here, but, um. I would just say one thing you might do as a new council member, if you feel really strongly about one of the options. If it's different than what we have, or even if it is the same, you may want to, you know, talk with some other council members to see if you align. So then, you know, you're kind of on the same page before you get there a little bit, rather than having to start from scratch in that meeting.
Good, good words. Hopefully you're carrying your luggage on.
I, I will be for sure.
And with regard to public input. I think it's buried from year to year how that's gone. Um, and so. Your guess is as good as mine is when it comes to how that might go.
That, that's what I was going to say is, is, uh, that, you know, s, some years, it's like, uh, it's like crickets. Nobody's that interested in, in what happens. There's even sometimes when we've had a, a, a small tax increase that it didn't raise people too, too much. Other times, um, depending on, I, I really think it's, it's more of a barometer what's going on in there in society, maybe as much as anything. But, but my crystal ball's been broke. I have no idea how many people are going to show up. And what they might say, but, um. Uh, it's never been like a, a discussion about chickens or. Cats or anything like that. Yeah. It's never, it's never that exciting.
Any other comments, questions, things I can help with?
I'm just going to, eh, eh, compliment the council staff. I told my wife today, I said, I, I have no idea how I, as a new council person, would have been able to get through all of this without. The professional support and work that's been done by. Council staff. You guys are all very much appreciated by me and I want you to know that while we're all in the room together. Thank you.
Well, and I will say, uh, we've really appreciated the engagement from the council members this year. This has been. A really tough budget. We've never had this many large issues and policy decisions. Come at the same time with the budget and, um, so we've appreciated the engagement that, that you've done and. And your willingness to make yourself available for some additional discussions and training, I guess. So thank you.
Well, and I'll, I'll, um, just extend a thank you. I mean, you know, the spreadsheets were mentioned. I, I really couldn't have done much of that without our finance folks, Justin and Lisa. So if I don't have the numbers to color code in those, they're, you know, not going to, not going to have a whole lot in there. So I appreciate. Those two and all the help that they've given us this year.
And it doesn't matter whether you're doing your first one or your tenth one. They have. That we've got great stuff. On both sides, yeah.
Any other comments on that? Okay. Council business, uh.
You should have received notice about, um, the WIFI loan signing event. They, you know, administration really feels like this is a big deal and having representatives here from EPA from DC. And so, uh, please let us know if you're going to be attending that event. Both, they need to plan for food. And for transportation if you, because they're going to be taking some. food and for transportation if you, because they're going to be taking some site tours. So they will be going up to the wellfields and, you know, down the canyon to show where the, where that pipeline will be or the current one is and where it will be. And and engineers will talk through basically the plans for phasing the project and how it's going to be carried out. So please let us know, let Mavis know if you're going to be able to attend.
Any idea if you were to do the whole shebang that day, transportation up to the wellfields and then the tour back down, what kind of time we're talking about?
I think it's scheduled from 10 to 4. Whether it's going to take that long or not, I don't know.
Thank you.
That is August 8th. It's a Thursday. Yep, that's all I had.
Okay. Everyone probably should have received an email from the mayor regarding Chief Young, if you haven't heard or just barely came across. So after 32 years of service, after 33 years of service with the Ogden Police Department, Chief Eric Young has announced his retirement. And so we kind of caught word on that yesterday and have been waiting for that, that news to come through. It looks like interim Deputy Chief Subi will be appointed as the as the interim at this point. So more, more to come on that for sure. But Chief Young's been a huge part of the city for 30, 32 years, 32 years. That's incredible. And so if you see him, you know, congratulate him on his retirement. He has another opportunity as well. So anyway. Any other, any other council business or discussion? Or if not, we are adjourned until 6 o'clock.
Thanks, everyone. Have a good evening.
Safe travels.